Good evening and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Bellingham Watcom County Forum for Candidates for the Blaine School Board. My name is Jill Bernstein and I am your moderator for this evening. First, we need to acknowledge that the land that we stand on is the traditional ancestral and unceded territory of the Lummi and Nuksek people, the original inhabitants of Washington's northernmost coast and southern British Columbia. Since time immemorial, they've celebrated and cared for their land and waters to perpetuate their ways of life. Please join me in deep gratitude for their ongoing wisdom and guidance as we take a moment to honor their ancestors and to acknowledge the past, present, and future Lummi and Nuksek people as the original inhabitants of this land. Our media partners this evening are the Salish Current, the Ferndale Record, the Northern Light, the Linden Tribune, and KMRE 88.3 FM Community Radio. We thank them most sincerely for their support. Founded in 1920, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that encourages informed and active participation of citizens in government. To that end, it works to acquaint people with their candidates, to increase understanding of major public policy issues, and also to influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League never endorses a candidate or a party. Membership is open to both men and women 16 years of age or older, and we cordially invite you all to join us. We say democracy is not a spectator sport. So let's get started. Tonight's forum is for Candidates for the Blaine School Board, and there are four seats on the ballot this fall. Each has two candidates. Not all of them could be with us this evening, so let's introduce those who are here. For seat number one, it is Kimberly Akri. Good evening, Ms. Akri. And her opponent Erica Cray could not join us this evening. Apparently, she has just taken ill. For seat number two, Dean Berkeley could not be with us. He has not explained his absence. He was invited, but we do have Ben Lazarus. Good evening, Ben.
Hello.
For seat number three, it is Jeffrey Carrington and Cliff Freeman. Mr. Carrington declined our invitation to participate in this forum because we were unwilling to share the questions with him ahead of time, but we do have Mr. Freeman. Good evening, Mr. Freeman.
Hi there.
And for seat number four, it is Derek Bovencamp. Good evening, Mr. Bovencamp.
Good evening, everybody.
And Ryan Ford. Hello, Mr. Ford.
Hello.
The Blaine School Board of Directors consists of five members elected by the entire district. The board's primary task is to formulate and evaluate all policies necessary for the operation of the school district. The board's legal responsibilities are to establish general policy for the school district, adopt and revise the annual operating budget, select the superintendent of schools, exercise the power to administer schools conferred by the state legislature, and keep the public informed on the needs and progress of the educational system. Board members are elected to serve a four-year term without pay. We will follow very specific rules for this forum. There will be no opening statements. Instead, the introductory question is tailored to illicit responses consistent with opening statements. Candidates will have a minute and a half to respond to each question, and we'll make a one-minute closing statement. The order of questions and closing statements is by seat alphabetically. This will be rotated every question. Each candidate has a challenge card. You want to show us your challenge card? And Mr. Ford doesn't have his card, but he's going to let me know if he has a challenge. And with this card, candidates may use the card to challenge or rebut their opponent's response. The challenging candidate will have 30 seconds to state the challenge, and his opponent will have 30 seconds to respond to the challenge. Each candidate may use their challenge card just one time. Our timer this evening is Siri Hiltz, who will be tracking the time. The timer background will flash to yellow when there are 15 seconds left, and then to red when time is out. Our moderator, me, will ask you to stop talking at that time if necessary. We ask that the candidates be respectful of the time allotted due to the limited amount of time that we have and our desire to include as many questions as possible. Members of the public were able to submit questions through the League of Women Voters' Bellingham Watcom County website up until today. These questions were screened to ensure they were not duplicates and were appropriately addressed to all of the candidates. So with the rules covered, let's get started. Timer, are you ready? I'm assuming she is. She's a little bit muted there, so I'm going to start, candidates, by asking you questions, and you will have a minute and a half to respond. And the first question, we'll start with Ms. Akri, which is, what is your vision for education in the district? And how would it work to support the economy and quality of life in the community?
I wish, I wish that I had a good answer for this, honestly. I feel like the district, you know, that our state is struggling with funding as far as public schools go. And unfortunately, you know, where we live right now, it's a wonderful place, but it's also kind of expensive to live. And so trying to, you know, bring in teachers and things like that, it's not an easy answer. I wish, you know, I wish that I could say more industry, more this, more that, but there, you know, as of right now, I don't know that I have a really great answer for that question. I think that, I have to be honest, if I don't know the answer, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say something. I think that we're blessed to live in a really great community, and we're also blessed to have a district that is full of committed educators who are excellent, you know? And I guess my biggest goal, my biggest goal is to maintain that, to hold on to the people that we have now, and continue to keep working with the state to try to get more funds for the public school so that we can maintain what we have at this point.
Great. And then, Mr. Lazarus, the same question. What is your vision for education in the district? And how does that vision support the economy and the quality of life in the community?
I'm glad I had a couple of extra seconds over there. I would like to see our schools, and I'm speaking as an outsider and a newbie, and with all the naivety that that brings and the things I will learn if I get to sit on the board, but I would like to see our schools provide a competitive education that is attracting students back into the schools. I think that the arts are an important part of that because they provide a space that kids want to be in. Sports teams, the same thing. I teach and work still in the trades, and I really see the value of those, and I think that's something that I would hope our school can support that would compete with the homeschooling option that has been drawing so many kids away. I know there's a lot of families that have chosen through the pandemic. They found new ways, and they were forced into homeschooling, and a lot of students are staying there. And I would like to be part of a school board that directs and builds a school that attracts those families back into our school system.
And Mr. Freeman?
Same question.
Yes, it is, about your vision.
My vision, I think about excellence in education, a quality program at Blaine that can continue to draw, draw from the other alternatives as kids, as kids can return. And so a part of the excellence in education is preparing kids for jobs, not necessarily preparing them for college education, but preparing them for the workforce when they leave high school. And right now, Blaine has a solid career in technology education program, and they're preparing kids for just that. I always think about the demographics of kids who say they're going to go on to college and realize that after four or five years, maybe 25% of the kids complete a degree, but the balance of them return and look for jobs. Blaine is preparing kids as they leave high school for trade-type jobs as well as culinary and medical-type technicians. So they've got a great start at doing just that. That's how I see Blaine supporting the community economically. Thank you.
And Mr. Bovencamp?
Well, I'm too glad I had a little bit to think about that one. I think, you know, we want our students to have a good, well-rounded education. It needs to prepare them, it needs to prepare them for life, whether that's going on to a four-year college, going to a trade or technical school, or, you know, just going into the working world right out of high school. So we want a, we want a good baseline level of education for all of our students. You know, that's math, reading, social studies, history, we want all of that. We don't want to cut something out, like Ben has brought up multiple times, arts and music. You know, you don't want to sacrifice the arts and the music for math. We should be able to teach all of those equally and give our students a good, well-rounded education to prepare themselves for the future.
Thank you. And Mr. Ford?
You said my vision for education in Blaine and how it will benefit the economy and community?
Yes.
Okay. So the way I see it, of course, there's lots of good things that are happening in Blaine, but I'm always up for an agent of change, see if there are things we can always improve. I can always do better every day. That's what I tell my employees. That's what I work for myself. And I think trying to find a way to create a more individualized education plan for each child. There are children who are excelling, there are children that are struggling, trying to find ways to get people that are in similar situations or students that are in same learning environments or same situations in learning in the same environment. Some of my kids are in the High Cap program. I think it's a great program. It allows some of the high-achieving children to get together and work together and try to grow and challenge themselves. There also should be ways where children who are struggling can get together and try to help support each other. I know we don't have a lot of educator resources right now, but I think that's something we should look to, grants or the things where we can bring in more teachers. That will help our economy and our community as a whole by providing the support that our students need in the classroom.
Thank you. And what you'll see is that we're going to rotate the order of things, so you'll each have a chance to be first in the batting order. And for the second question, it is, in recent years, there have been debates about curriculum content and teaching approaches. How will you approach these issues and ensure a balanced and inclusive education for all students? And we'll start with Mr. Lazarus.
That's something, it actually came up in a conversation with a coworker this afternoon, and I really feel I've got a lot more listening to do there before I would venture to do a whole lot of expanding on my opinions. A lot of times, there's good reasons behind the scenes that we don't see for something that we may disagree with at our first glance. And I think any kind of a curriculum change instantly brings, you know, people who are for, people who are against, and I would want to be exploring what specific curriculum changes we're talking about and spending some time researching that, and then I would be able to give a good answer to that. As a general question, I find it kind of hard to answer because I'm not sure what specific curriculum changes that you're asking about.
Okay. And Mr. Freeman, you're up next. And the question again is, in recent years, there have been debates about curriculum, content, and teaching approaches. How will you approach these issues and ensure a balanced and inclusive education for all students? And it is you, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. I too think about reviewing the curriculum across the board, and that question reminds me of Common Core, which entered the picture maybe a decade ago. And I was struggling with that. I was listening to it, and I realized that there was a curriculum that was driven upon the school district from the top down, from the feds through the states. Money was the angle that got people plugged in. Teachers were told how to present that material. I looked at it close enough where I said, that's not right. I'm a fan of the teaching staff and not looking for those folks to be bridled so much where they're told just how to present that information. They need a little bit of freedom to present to their students the way, the way they see them learning in those situations. So I use Common Core as an example of something that was forced, that really needed to be rejected in some fashion. I trust our staff, our faculty, more with their judgment around these things than I do top-down-driven issues there. So I, again, it's about reviewing curriculum, taking a look at the restrictions that are there, and it makes some informed decisions around, are we approaching this the right way, or do we need to make some course corrections? Thank you.
And Mr. Bovencamp?
You know, I was just talking with the superintendent about this last night. I remember when, when I was in high school, we had semesters, and sometimes, especially, this was especially evident in math class, where you would switch teachers in the semester, and because the teachers didn't all have their curriculum aligned, some of them expected to teach things in the first semester, some of them in the second semester. The students were at a loss of, because their teacher changed. They would have had the same education at the end of the year, but there was a lot of going back and reteaching. So, you know, I certainly do trust our teachers and administrators. We need to look at what we have now. We need to listen to the teachers. We need to listen to the administrators. We need to listen especially to the parents before we make any changes. And if we do make a change, is we want to make sure that there is a good collaborative feedback system. And what I was talking with superintendent about is, if you did have instances of like what I discussed, the teachers need to have a collaborative way that they can talk to, talk to the other teachers and tell them what worked well and what didn't work well, and that's respected. And he said something that I really wanted to take away from that, is he said, we'll have known we solved the problem when the teachers don't have, they don't want to pick the students that their kids are in, or their kids.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you so much. And Mr. Ford?
I agree with a lot of things that Mr. Bovencamp said. I think a committee needs to be formed with parents, retired teachers. We have some amazing retired teachers in our community, like Mr. Steelquist, Mr. Gray, these men who, or women who have been in our community teaching our kids for decades. I am not an expert in curriculum by any means, and I bring other aspects of collaboration that I could help, but I think we need to put a committee together of current teachers, former teachers, parents, administrators, and they all need to sit down in a room and look at the current curriculum, see where we're succeeding and where we're failing, and find a new path forward, try to find a new way to innovate.
And Ms. Akri?
I haven't, I've not been on the board for a long time, but the one thing that I know, and actually, last night at the forum, one of my colleagues on the board, Don Liu, pointed out, the school district has gone through and approved curriculum that are school-wide, and those curriculum were, to the best of my knowledge, were approved by teachers. It went through a process, and so the teachers and the administration worked together to come up with a curriculum that they felt would be best for the students. I think that's, that's the most important part. The teachers are the ones who are going to have to be presenting this material and finding ways to teach it, and so that's the way it should be. I think the only other comment I'll make on curriculum, I know there's a lot of, a lot of things flying around and just in the news and social media and things about what's being taught, critical race theory, things like that. People have come up with that, and it's, you know, Washington State has a thing, very quickly, just point this out. People talk about critical race theory. What it is, is that it's not a critical race. The school districts have to do DEI and SEL training every other year. It's not the teachers teaching it, it's the administration, the school board, and the faculty that have to do these trainings. It's not the kids. And so I think it's important to put that out there.
I'm sorry, but that has to end your answer. Thank you. And the third question for this evening is that, of a growing concern is the emotional and mental health of our student population. What initiatives will you advocate for to support students' mental health? And we'll start with Mr. Lazarus.
Okay. Well, that's, that's one that I can speak to fairly easily, and that was why I spoke in defense of the arts. I've seen some of the kids coming to our house over the last couple of years, and I've seen how they've changed. One, one student in particular started out wearing a mask all the time and hiding and not liking anything about themselves, and I saw what the theater program and that inclusivity did for them. And so I really think the best thing we can be doing for our kids to help their mental health is providing safe and welcoming spaces in the school for them. And I really like what the theater program does for my kids. I know that sports programs do that for other kids. I think the easiest way to deal with these things is to get our kids away from their phones into spaces where they're talking and laughing and being kids the way they need to be.
And Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. Social and emotional learning, that's just, and of my reading, that's another key word that is involved in critical race theory. So I'd want to look pretty hard at those programs that tag that. Now, when I think about mental health issues that go on in the school, that's certainly a real thing, and I think teachers certainly are the front lines for that. I like to see teachers aware of that, of those, of those kids with those concerns. I, I say that, you know, teachers need to be in a position where they immediately contact parents and bring them into the fold along with the principal and meet and discuss what the issues are with that particular child and make sure they engage the parents for support and direction to help that child. And so I would leave it at the teachers being on the front line, and they need help. They need help, and once they identify it, they need the parents plugged into that in a, in a serious way. Thank you.
Mr. Bovencamp?
Yeah, this is a great question because it is, it is a challenge that we have today. We, we need our students to be safe, both physically and emotionally. School needs to be a safe place for them. You know, things like bullying can't be tolerated. And we do, we do need students to feel like they are involved in something, whether that be something through the arts, through sports. I was, I was in Boy Scouts when I was a youth. My son is now. It really changed my life. It gave me a feeling of belonging, and coupled with the school built me into who I am today. So I would say it's not just something that schools need to do. The schools need to work with the entire community, and yes, there's school programs like sports and nerds and all that stuff, but we also need to make sure parents know about outside sports, YMCA programs, anything that our youth can be involved in together, get that feeling of belonging, and then that way, when they do go through tough challenges in their life, they have a, they have a social safety net that's more than just their family, it's friends in their area too. Thank you.
And Mr. Ford?
Mental and emotional health is, is an important thing in my family. I've got four daughters, so there's a lot of emotions flying around in my house. And I think a lot of the, the best way to support, to support the children is through their home, but many children in our school district don't have a home where the parents are always available or able and equipped to help the children. So I think supporting, supporting the counselors at school and trying to find ways to have more counselors, have peer support groups or things of that nature. I know my son in the primary school deals with, I guess we're not supposed to say names, but the counselor in the, in the primary school, and he's phenomenal. And since my son, you know, he was really struggling in kindergarten with, with school, and he hated going every day. I had to get him out of bed and dress him every day, but having that support system and having someone that would just listen to him was so huge. And again, I completely agree with Mr. Freeman about how the teachers are the front lines, and they need to be able to support the kids and recognize when there's concerns and help them get the help that they need with counselors.
And Ms. Akri?
Think that, again, one of the things that I've found now in the last several months is all of the things that the schools provide for the community at large, and mental health is, is one of those things. And it's, it's difficult because, as my, you know, my other co-candidates have said, it's multifaceted, you know? Sometimes you have family at home that is able to say, hey, my student is struggling. Sometimes they don't have that support system at home, and so it's, you know, somebody like a teacher or somebody else notices. I can tell you from my own personal experience, you know, with my children who've gone through the school, they're doing, they're doing a good job, you know, as far as when we have seen a need, we've seen something going on and said, hey, we got, we got to figure out what's going on, you know? The support system is there, but I think maybe most people don't know it's there. And I'm not certain, you know, maybe that's something that I could even do a better job just as a board member, just when, you know, allowing people to know what resources are there for them to support their students and their families.
This next question, I'm going to ask you to be very specific in your answer. The question is, teacher recruitment and retention can be challenging. What specific steps will you take to attract and retain high-quality educators in the district? And Mr. Lazarus, we'll start with you.
I've started the last couple of times. And so may?
You know, it's a little bit awkward because of our, we've lost a couple of candidates, but if you'll, if you'll humor me and keep me up to the right page here, we'll start with you.
Okay. I'm not sure what power the board has to do that. That's something I'm going to have to learn about. I know attracting good teachers is important. At the moment, we seem to be shedding teachers more than we're hiring, so I don't know that we're even in a position to be trying to hire new teachers until we can get enrollment coming up and we can create a need for new teachers. So I struggle with what specifically the board could do for that. I'm sorry, I don't have a great answer for that.
Mr. Freeman?
Yeah, I'm with you, Ben. That's a tough one. I'm from the private sector, and of course, we think about those issues all the time. How do we attract, retain? And it's, it's usually, money's a component of that. Challenging work is a component of that. Public sector is much different. You know, I think right now, there are a lot of teachers chasing too few jobs, which means, which means we can be a bit more selective in that. And so I guess I would, I just think about those possibilities during recruiting and during selection processes to, to sort out the best candidates, and that, that's probably all I would say about that. Thanks.
Can I throw in a little bit more?
No, no, no. I'm sorry, Mr. Bovencamp?
Okay, I'll think about this in two parts. Let's talk about retention first. Okay, I'll, I'll think about this in two parts. Um, let's talk about retainment first. So um, obviously, um, everybody wants to make more money, more money have better benefits. That's, that's, that's one part of it. But um, I'd like to look at the other things that we can do that aren't strictly money related. I think we need to look at our, our teachers um health, you know, mental health and stuff at the, at the district and figure out what's working well, what's not working well, what's keeping them up at night, what is stressing them out? How can we make sure that the working in the schools is a fun and engaging environment for them? And um, you know, if we do have teachers leaving, I know we're talking about we're shutting teachers, but say we are losing teachers that are just quitting to quit or quitting to go to other districts. We need to know why and we need to reverse that. And that takes care of it when you're hiring, when you're on the hiring side as well, because if you have that good engaging environment, they're going to be telling all their friends that they went to school with, hey, you gotta come work for us because it's the best. Thank you.
And Mr. Ford.
I think a big part of that is with retention, making sure teachers feel heard and respected. Um, again, I don't know all the background with a lot of it, but I, you know, I've talked to a number of teachers when I signed up for going on the school board. And there's a lot of them that are, are really concerned. They're, they're not feeling heard. There, you know, there's a number of things. And again, I'm not saying it's right, wrong or indifferent, but if, if perception is everything, if someone perceives that they're not being heard or respected, they're not going to, they're not going to stay, they're not going to retain. They're not going to last into the early years of retirement where they could stay or could go. Um, of course, there's a financial component to that as well. But I mean, communicating with the teachers and trying to help them find a work-life balance. I know it's not necessarily a popular idea in my household, but is going to a year-round school model something that would give a better work-life balance for teachers and allow us to retain or attract new teachers that other school districts aren't taking advantage of, and it wouldn't really cost any money?
And Miss Akri.
I think as the board, we, you know, in my experience so far, we, we don't have oversight directly uh with hiring, with hiring um faculty that's left to the administration. Um, I think for us, it's more important that we are setting guidelines, setting forth, you know, what the expectations are, what our hopes are for um where the people who are going to be coming to work in the district, that they're going to follow um along with our culture and our you know, our goals and things like that. Um, we have minimal, you know, uh, each meeting, we have minimal I'm trying to think of a good word for this. Anyway, we review people who are being hired for positions or leaving positions and things like that. But it's not a hands-on thing. And so I think it's more important that we focus on what our common goal is as a school district. Start from the top, you know, and it's like Blaine is every student every day. Keep working with that. And um, it's not for me, you know, as a board member, we don't, I can't micromanage and keep up with all of these things. It's just for me to oversee what the administration in each of the schools is doing. Um, and make sure that they're following along with, with that goal.
Thank you. And um, we're going to make sure that Mr. Lazarus is off the hot seat and we will, uh, the rotation is catching up with us now. So uh, the order will be a little bit different. But the question is The New York Times recently reported student absenteeism post-COVID has soared. In Blaine, O S P I reports that fifty-six point three percent of its students regularly attend school. In fact, every school district in Watkins County except Linden is below the state attendance average of sixty-seven point two percent. What specific policies would you propose to improve school attendance in your district? And uh be as specific as possible and we'll start with you, uh, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. You know, enough, I do not have any specific policies that come to mind. Um, you know, kids, if, if kids don't want to go to school, some of it has to do with uh, they just, they just don't feel enthusiasm, excitement that's there. Um, that apathy probably, um, probably comes from home. Um, we're dealing with a population right now, which has probably the highest ever single, single parent um, in the household. Um. And I know that from past experience dealing with some of these senior projects, I've heard kids say that they, uh, their day, their biggest worry during the day is where they're going to sleep at night. So when you've got those kinds of issues going on in your personal life, I can see where the school is way down the list of priorities and um and I, and I, I'm thinking that uh nothing comes to mind that the school a policy that might incentivize that. I think it's got to come from parents. Parents got to step up and do the right thing. We've got too many slackers out there. And um, that's, that's the issue, the home life. Thank you.
Mr. Bovin Camp.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know enough about the topic right now to make like a, a major policy proposal. But I, I do think we need to understand why. I was looking at those numbers myself. Um, they have gotten significantly worse uh post-COVID than they were before COVID. So I think we need to listen to the teachers and the school counselors to find out why in general, what are the reasons for students? Uh, what, what, there's rate is up. And then once we know, um, I know it won't be one reason, there'll be lots of reasons. But uh, we'll have hopefully a pattern of reasons. Once we have that pattern, then we need to again um come up with a policy to, to help with that. Now, some of that will will resolve itself that if uh things are going really well in the school and students are excited and having fun learning, then um I, I think that, that, that rate will go down. But uh, it is, we do really need to work together. It's going to be teachers, counselors, administrators, and especially the parents uh, to get that number where we want to see it.
And Mr. Ford.
I, I think Derek has a great point. I think that uh we need to be working with the teachers and as they're recognizing with individual students absenteeism and, and uh attendance issues involving the counselor and have the counselors just as a, as a non-threatening situation. Hey, you know, how's it going? What's going on? And once we kind of gather, I mean, gather the data. You know, just put in, put a person as, as, as harsh as it is, you, you put them in kind of a category. Okay, this person is because they're homeless, just like Mr. Freeman was saying. It's a huge issue in our, in our community. Uh, this person has a, a struggle getting a ride to school, whatever those are, we put them into categories and average out the categories and see where the biggest areas of focus that we can help our students with. If it's transportation, go that route. If it's homelessness, try reaching out more to nonprofits that could help in those areas. I know there's lots of different areas and some of it's just not wanting to be there. And at some point it's, you know, they have to want to try to be there. But if there are ways that we can support them, I think we really need to try.
Miss Akri.
And one of the things that I, you know, I've had, I have two kids, one graduated in twenty twenty, one's a senior this year. And I've learned that um, students are all different. I have one, you know, one child who had no problem being in school all day and it was easy for him. And I have another child who it's torture for him. He doesn't enjoy it. And it's very difficult for him to, you know, be in school for seven hours a day. One of the things that I'm actually really pleased about is the school district is, I think we're, we are in the process of looking forward, you know, and trying to create an online high school. And it actually might even uh include um eighth grade as well. But for, for students who have a difficult time, um, for whatever reason, they can do their schooling at different hours. They can do it in the evenings. They can break it up and still participate in with the school district and then also be involved with extracurriculars too. So if they wanted to do this online option, they could still play a sport or be in the play or participate in music, um, band, all of, all of those kind of things. I think those are the things we need to look at. We need to think a little outside of the box. It's um you, you know, times have changed and families have changed too. People have different priorities and, and so I think it's important that we have flexibility.
Thank you. And Mr. Lazarus.
Oh my gosh, it is so much nicer to go last. Love this. Building on what everybody else said. Um, I think that it may be due to home life issues for a lot of our students, but from the board position, there's nothing we can do about that. We can only work with the students that are coming to us. I think providing as, as Kim says, um options for, for students that struggle with in-person learning that allows them to still attend but be part of our school and our school district and our budget too, which is important, uh, is a, a good policy to pursue. And policies that deal with bullying and deal with making places that kids want to come to. I've got a friend of mine who's really struggling with her daughter not wanting to go to school. And I think you, you really can't do it with, with a whole lot of stick. It's going to be um, a lot more care and making a place that kids feel welcome and safe and want to go to uh is going to be the best type of policy that's going to combat this. And I know it's important. Um, I've seen studies that tie uh academic achievement and life achievement, achievement pretty directly to attendance. So it is definitely something that's important. Um, and those are the policies I think would be most helpful.
Thank you. We know that school funding is a perennial concern. What strategies are you going to propose to ensure that our schools have the necessary resources to provide a high-quality education? And Mr. Bovin Camp, we begin with you.
Um, you know, I, 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 I think we got to um, look, look directly at the budget. Um, and, and we really need to um make sure that we're, we're spending the money in uh the most efficient and economical way. Um, I think Kimberly said last night, I think she had the number is the, it's about eighty, eighty or eighty-five percent of the budget is, is salaries. Um, so there's not, you know, there's not a lot to cut there out of the last fifteen percent. Uh, but I, I think we need to look at that every year and make sure that we're spending the money in the uh best economical way for uh the voters and the taxpayers. Um, in cases where, you know, we do feel we need ex, extra funding, um, I think we need to really communicate with the community clearly uh what the needs are and have clear um talking points of what we need, not just, we need more money. Um, and uh work with the community, work with the parents. And then uh that way we can work with the local um legislators uh to see if that can be resolved, if that's needed.
Mr. Ford.
Uh, I agree that budget definitely needs to be reviewed and, and actual spending checked. I was at a, a board meeting uh a few months ago and they were approving the budget for the next year, but when I asked about, okay, well, where's the, but what we actually spent last year? She said, oh, well, we reported that to O S P I. I was like, okay, well, when will that be available? Well, I've checked on it. It was only like a year or two behind, so we won't actually see the actual spend numbers for a while. So I think we need to review that as the board and as a community and see where the money is being spent and where we all can like, like Mr. Bovin Camp said, trim, trim the fat, spend money responsibly. And I think uh something I thought of was, uh, are we doing enough to go after grants? I don't know the answer to that question. There's private, private sector grants, public grants that we could hire either have a former student who just went to college to do some grant writing on the side while they're in school, make a little bit of money. And then we can reap the benefits from that. Or also reaching out to our legislators and saying, look, we need more money. We're spending all this money paying off kids' student loans. Uh, they already made that choice to take that debt on. I think we should try to send some of that money towards K through twelve education.
And Miss Akri.
I think the one thing that um it's really difficult to understand until you actually get a chance to sit down and look at it is how challenging funding is. The school, I said this last night, you know, the uh, the state requires us to provide a certain level of education and services to the students and the families in our district, but they don't fully fund it. And so we're working within a system that's untenable, you know, every year our costs go up, but they're not fully funding. And our only hopes, you know, in the meantime, are doing levies and bonds. And unfortunately, you know, in twenty eighteen, I think it was, the McCleary decision, which I think is very well-intentioned and I agree with it on principle. Unfortunately, some districts were hurt and ours was one of the ones that hurt. And so now we don't have the same levy power that we had. And those were the funds that we used to use to make up the difference that we didn't get from the state. Um, and so I don't know that I have a great answer. Uh, my only, you know, when I talk to people, it's like, I'll just keep asking, I'll keep, you know, asking legislatures. We'll keep talking, you know, talking to people, what can we do? Because we really need to fully fund public education because we don't now.
And Mr. Lazarus.
I think that this is a question that uh it's it's not really, I don't believe the responsibility or more importantly, the power and the power of the board to come up with more funding. I think on the board, your job is, your job and your power is to try and use the funding that you've got. But the basic problem is that what I've been hearing again and again from the people on the board, from the people who, who would know best is that the state is not fully funding uh our education the way they, they should be. But the board, five people on the board really aren't the ones with the power to change that. That's the power of the voters. That is the power of everyone in the community, not five of us on the board, writing their legislator, writing the, the, the appropriate people to say, this is important to me. If all the parents, if all the grandparents, if all the aunts and uncles, if all the senior grads uh got onto that, I think that would be more effective than anything the board can really do. Which is unfortunate, but I think that's, that's the problem that I'll be facing on the board if I, if I'm elected is to manage the funds that we've got. But um, it's more in the power of a larger group of the population to to change that amount of funding than five people on the board.
And Mr. Freeman.
Well, the only I'd add to that is that funding will always be an issue. It's, there's lots of moving parts to that. Uh, we're at the mercy of um outside folks. Uh, I, I just think about visibility for the community. The people of Blaine being aware of where the shortfalls are at, um, what the state does. The um, and be clear that we've done everything we can to tighten our belt. And, and then they've got to decide, does um the increased taxes make up the difference? Is um, is that a sig- um, significant importance to the community? Um, maybe, but it's um, it's lots, lots of pieces to this puzzle. And I, I think um, you can attack it from all fronts, but the community's got to be plugged in and understand what we're faced with. That's all I have to offer. Thanks.
Now, we know that technology is playing an increasingly important role in education. What will you do to ensure that all students have access to up-to-date technology and digital resources, including internet access? Mr. Ford.
I think technology is a huge part of our, our current and, and future needs in education. Uh, a large portion of our, our students will eventually work in the technology industry. Um. I think working with partners, uh, we've got Microsoft in this state. I have former connections with Google. And working with those companies and find ways for them to educate children through the free resources that they have, because it's in their best interest to train kids in their um operating systems to try to keep them as, as customers. So I think using those um means to help, to help children uh are huge. And then reaching out to local internet community or internet companies like Xfinity or Ziply or any of those and seeing if there's ways that we can provide the uh financial assistance paperwork or whatever it is for those families to be able to get free or reduced price internet.
And Miss Akri.
Um, I, I have to be honest, I'm not super knowledgeable on this topic. I do know right now the district does give out uh Chromebooks to all I do know right now the district does give out uh Chromebooks to all students in middle and high school. So um all of the kids who uh would be needing them for curriculum, everybody has a a tablet or I'm I'm sorry, a laptop that they can use. I know during COVID that we also had uh Wi-Fi hotspots that were given out to families who needed because everything was remote learning. Uh, I don't, I I honestly don't know at this point what the status of that is. And that would be something that I could list you, that's something that I could look into too and see if it's an option to give out. But I do know that, you know, to the best of my knowledge, the district is supporting um technology needs at the moment. And I guess if there was something that someone had a question about to me, I could, I could address it further.
Mr. Lazarus.
Um, I think the Chromebooks that are handed out to the middle schoolers and high schoolers are a great and very cost-effective way to get technology into our students' hands. I didn't really know what a Chromebook was until my kids came home with one. And, you know, they're really not that expensive for a little pseudo laptop, as long as you've got Wi-Fi available. Um, and I fully would would support fully using technology as in my classroom as much as I can. I teach using YouTube videos, wherever I can find somebody who's covered the material I'm going to teach. Uh, I get my students' links to that. Uh, I love uh online platforms like Khan Academy and supporting policies that uh leverage really cost-effective uh educational tools that our 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 teachers can use that provide for a very individual um uh learning speed and pace. For all the students is great. There's lots of stuff out there. Um, and then, of course, uh, the 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 technology training programs. Um, I really think that shifting our schools from a model of uh uh university prep schools towards accepting that there's many, many ways for our 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 kids to go. And university isn't just the choice that you make because you're smart. Uh, there's lots of great choices that are technology-based.
And uh, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. It's important, technology. And I just think as a board member, you make, um, you you certainly know whether your your teaching staff and your administrators are fully aware of it, they appreciate it. And within the district, you you do as much as you can with the limited funds to continue to support that, recognize that it's it's um got to be at the forefront and we, and it's a moving target and you got to make improvements uh regularly to that, but staying on top of it's an important issue. And and I suspect that that um uh between administrators and 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 teaching staff that they they continue to pound that drum and make um make the district aware of that. Thank you.
Mr. Bovencamp.
Yeah, thank you. So uh I I work in in healthcare information technology, so I agree. Even for non-technology jobs, we are expecting more and more of our employees. So when I spoke earlier about that baseline knowledge that everybody needs out of high school, part of that is using a computer and everything that goes with it. Um, I'm familiar with the Chromebooks myself, or I son has one. Um, I would want to learn more about what the school is using now before proposed changes. Uh, but yeah, any anything that we can do to um that can also cheapen the cost, you know, if we're not buying textbooks, we're using online things. Um, hopefully, that's, you know, maybe saving some money in that budget. Um, and then for for students at home, yes, I know during COVID, this school had uh Wi-Fi hotspots for people. I know there's a lot of uh federal um programs uh to get internet in cell phones at a greatly reduced cost. So for uh families who aren't fortunate enough to be able to uh afford the regular price, we'd want to make sure that the school has ways to uh connect families either with those forms or or how to use it and knows that that's available for them so those uh students can have internet at home as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And the superintendent of the Olympia Public Schools announced their intention to bring back community police officers to campuses to improve safety for students. If you're elected, what steps would you propose to improve safety for students? And we'll begin with you, Ms. Akri.
Well, as far as a student resource officer, um, we don't have funding for that at this point. Um, so bringing a police officer in isn't necessarily something I think that's an option at this point. One of the things that the uh the school is working on right now, which I think is promising, is they have an app that for kids to leave class, to go to the office, to go to the nurse, to go to the bathroom. They're on their Chromebook that's issued by the school. They just send a thing, their teacher says, yes, you can go. It makes sure that uh that the kids are going where they're supposed to go. They're going to the bathroom and it also ensures that that you have kids that aren't congregating in areas, like everybody leaving at one time. So that's one of the ways that they're working on making things safer. It also has a, they also have safety plans too. If there are kids who have conflict, they aren't allowed to be, you know, there is a plan as far as how to go from class to class, how they go, you know, you use this hall, you use this hall, you use this bathroom, you use that bathroom. I mean, it, the the step, the stuff is there. Um, and again, it's just one of those things that um it would be great if we had more people to be able to support these kind of systems. Um, and right now with the funding that we have, it just doesn't look that promising, so.
Okay, Mr. Lazarus.
Uh, I think there's two aspects to the safety. There's there's the internal safety of kids with kids and bullying and vaping and and vandalism and those types of issues. And then there's external safety, which is, you know, people coming into the building and 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 attacking our children. I think our external safety is is pretty good. There's, you know, we had a gun incident, there was an instant lockdown. I don't know if managed perfectly, but I'm sure reviews happened and there was lots of people uh going through that. And I really haven't, in my conversations with parents, with teachers, with administrators, I haven't heard a whole lot of complaints from that side. Where I have heard problems is from the internal safety, from kids not feeling safe at school. Um, thankfully, at the last uh P T O meeting I went to, I've heard that the problem is getting better. Um, I'm definitely interested in seeing how this app works. I think that's a great cost-effective way to um leverage technology um and keep, you know, kids that are having conflicts with with each other, away from each other. Um, keep kids out of the bathrooms, you know, for purposes other than, you know, what you should be doing in a bathroom. Um, so I I guess that's my answer to the safety. I think our biggest concern is more uh internal safety with kids and bullying and getting a safe and welcoming environment for our kids, because that's what I heard from my daughters and their friends uh was their biggest uh problem at the schools.
Mr. Freeman.
Thank you. I think that that move that Olympia is making is certainly the right move. Um, I like the way Ben is couched between external and internal safety. So on on the external safety front, um, um, a resource officer, an armed resource officer dedicated to the campus is really the right move to make. Uh, we've been fortunate in Blaine um and and it's all of a sudden, when something does happen, then you wish we would have put other things in place. So it is a um, it is a, you know, cal- is a a game of risks. What, how do we want to, how do we want to present that? Um, and then, and then, because I believe in an armed safety officer on campus, and it's a matter of readjusting priorities. Funding is, of course, the issue, maybe it's got to be something put out to the to the taxpayers and say, this is what this is what we want to do, and it's going to take some extra funding to do it. But that's um, that's, that's the right move, I think, and I would leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Bovencamp.
Yeah, I personally, uh, I feel like myself and my friends always had a a really good relationship with our uh student or school resource officers, I believe what they used to call them. So I am, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that. If if funding is an issue, I think you got, you got to go to the city, you got to go to the county. We're very close to the border. The Border Patrol helped out at that lockdown a couple of years ago. Um, I don't know if that means we can go talk with the federal government and see if there's funds available for that. That's, that's, that's one thing. So a hundred percent in favor of student resource officers in building a positive relationship uh between the law enforcement and students. Um, I think you also got to make sure that any new school we build, uh, we're doing to all the best practices uh for for safety. Mr. Lou talked about that last night. Um, so we need to do that. We need to make sure our existing schools have done everything we can. And then the last thing is, yes, we do need, we do need to approach it from the other side with the community. Um, I um, I I I think we need to have people come in. Uh, I remember when I was in school, I'll bet this quick, um, I, we had a former drug addict, drug addict come in and talk to us about uh drugs and what it did to him. And that was, that was bigger than anything in my life for not doing drugs. Was not just, don't do drugs, it was hearing from somebody who did it and how it destroyed their life. So things like that for gangs, we need to do that.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Ford.
Uh, I I agree. I think a student resource officer is huge. Um, just that presence on on campus is is huge. Uh, again, it's finding the budget and like so many people have said, look into other resources, local, state, federal governments, to see if there are grants or other resources to try to make our our students safe.
So our last question for the evening is one that each of you will be happy with. And uh, because it is, goes to the heart of your campaign. What are the particular issues that motivated you to run for the school board and to decide to serve your community in this way? Mr. Lazarus, we'll start with you.
Oh, the hot seat. Fun. Okay. Um. I didn't expect to run for school board. You know, eight months ago, six months ago, I wasn't even thinking about this. I went to the big uh school board meeting in April with the budget cuts and all the contentious and and unhappy people. And after speaking, you know, in defense of the arts and the and the programs that are important to my kids, I watched the workings of the board. And to be fair, I didn't really understand what was going on. Uh, and I have seen the board making strides towards or some deliberate steps towards better communication, which was great. But I left not feeling like the 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 board wasn't doing quite what I thought they should have done. And I remember thinking, I can sit in the back and heckle and complain and point fingers, or I can put my feet forward and offer my time and my 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 energy to try and do a great job for my community. I've got two kids in the school and um that motivated me to to put my name forward. And I'm hoping I can serve.
Uh, Mr. Freeman. What particular issues motivated you to decide to run and serve your community in this way?
Well, the primary issue was just really thinking about serving the community. I looked this at this as an opportunity to step in and do just that. I don't have any particular issues. I'm proud of the way Blaine operates. I know quite a bit of the the faculty administration. Um, I like the way the school operates. I think there's always room for improvements. I'd just like to bar, be a part of that continued success that the board arrives have. Thank you.
And Mr. Bovencamp, what about you? What particular issues motivated you to run and decide to serve community in this way?
Yeah, you know, a couple of things. I didn't, I didn't expect I would be running either. I'm busy. I've worked two different jobs. I volunteer for the Mount Baker Council Boy Scouts of America. Um, but I think uh part of it is the recent uh polarization of um everything and uh hearing about politics uh coming into schools. I I I just don't believe it's a political thing. And um, you know, budget challenge, so budget challenges and uh, you know, test scores and the challenges post, post-COVID world for our schools is um really what what convinced convinced me uh to run. And I I I just believe I can make a difference. Um, and 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 really help the schools get turned around and get better than they were before COVID.
Mr. Oh, excuse me. And Mr. Ford.
Um, I think the the main issues that that inspired me to to run were um, like many others have said, budget concerns. Uh, and again, it's more one of those things, hey, can I help? That's it. Not thinking any, you know, I could have done better than anyone, nothing like that. It's just, is there anything I can offer the community to help? My kids are going to be going here for a long time. I've got one kid in preschool. So I want to make sure that, you know, my kids have a good financial step four when it comes to teachers. I don't want them to have thirty student classrooms. Um, also, just supporting the kids in general. Is there anything that I can do for their social, emotional, or economic benefits that could help them in in the long term? Um, and last, try to see if I can help the teachers. If there's anything that we can do uh to make Blaine a more teacher-friendly area, you know, reaching out to the private sector, see if you can get uh discounts at local restaurants for with their uh teacher faculty card or something like that. Just innovative ways that we can set ourselves up better than the other communities around us to attract those better teachers and to retain them.
And Miss Akri.
So I I had actually thought about um a school board position for quite some time. And then when my, when there was an opening in my district, the director had to step down or step down and I figured, you know, this is it, this is what you've been waiting for. Um, I think most people who know me, my sister and I, we own a business in town. Very, very civic-minded, do whatever we can to support anything in, you know, in in Blaine. And to me, the school is like the core of that. You know, it is, it is the community, it's the families and the kids and the people who teach there. And it's very important. And to me, one of my biggest concerns that I have seen over the last several years now is I feel like school boards have become polarized and political. And uh I didn't want to see that happen in Blaine. I'm just, I'm a measured person. I want to be, I'm a balanced person. And I I just don't want to see somebody come in with an agenda um that could possibly kind of derail all of the positive things that are happening right now in our district.
Well, thank you to each of you. Um, now we are going to give you one minute to make a closing statement. Uh, and we will start with Mr. Bovencamp.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, in closing, I had a quick story to share about myself. Um, growing up, I had a very hard time reading. Uh, while my comprehension uh level was was high, my actual ability to read was at one point several grade levels below where I was supposed to be. Uh, I was in special education for many years. Uh, there were times where I had uh arguments with my parents about how stupid I was. Um, you know, fortunately, through the work of very dedicated teachers and family, I was able to successfully overcome that challenge. Uh, I share that because beyond having a son in the district, I want everybody to know that I know firsthand how important public education is and how students can learn to overcome challenges and fight through adversity to be successful in life. I can promise you that if elected to this position, I'll give nothing less than my best and I'd be honored to have your vote this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ford.
I think in in thinking of the reason that that we're all running is for the kids. You know, I, like I said in my previous statement, I just want to do anything I can to help improve the community around me. Um, if I have the opportunity, uh, and even if I don't win, I'm still going to be there at as many meetings as I can to help help support the school board and and the community to see what we can do if we all put our heads forward. I think there needs to be more community involvement from parents, from grandparents, from just general community members. And I think we could all elevate our school district a lot higher than it cur- it currently is if we all participate. So that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Lazarus.
Um, before I put my name in, when I first looked, took a look at the school board list of the people who are currently serving, I was really, really impressed by the the quality, the education, the dedication uh that was clearly brought to the board by the people that were there already. Uh, if I'm elected, I'm going to spend the first part of my term doing more listening than talking, because I've got a lot of learning to do. Um, and this has been how I ran my business, this has been how I started my teaching career. I really think that I've got a lot of listening to, a lot of learning to do. Um, but I am very good at collaborating and finding inventive solutions. And like everybody else here, you know, we're all doing this for our kids, volunteer position. And I hope to have the opportunity to serve in it. And I hope to have the opportunity to serve in it. Thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Thank you. Public education is important. The success of Blaine High School and the school district is extremely important to me. I think I have something to contribute to that continued success and I look forward to serving, to do just that. Thank you.
And Ms. Akri?
Uh, I think that the one thing that I would like to just put out to everybody, uh oftentimes I hear the, and I, you know, it's reflected. People tell me the sentiment, you know, that they don't know what's going on, they don't understand. Um, and they feel like there's not a lot of transparency. And the one thing that I would like to just say is that I'm out here for people to come talk to me. If you have questions about what's going on in the school board, if you have questions about budgets, if you have questions about operating procedure, any of the decisions that we're making. Um, the best thing to do is come and talk to one of us. And uh, that's, I guess, probably my number one goal, is just to make sure people know that I'm available. And um, and if I don't know the answer to the question, I'll definitely find out for you. And I appreciate any support.
Thank you. And thank you to each of the candidates. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, it is with uh deep gratitude. That we conclude this evening's forum. Uh, and we thank the candidates for being here and for their interest in serving community. And running for public office. Voters can find more information about the candidates online at vote four one one dot org. And in your voter pamphlet. Ballots will be mailed on October eighteenth of this year. Your ballot must be postmarked or in a ballot drop box before eight o'clock PM on November seventh of twenty twenty-three. And remember to sign the ballot envelope. And if mailing by postal service, we recommend mailing early. Now, we had planned to move from this very interesting and important conversation with the school board. To a forum featuring the two candidates for Blaine City Council. And those candidates are uh Sonia Hurt and Stephen Tojek. And unfortunately, we cannot proceed with that forum this evening. And we are deeply disappointed that it can't go forward. Um, but Mr. Tojek had said earlier that he would participate if he could get off of work. But he informed us late this afternoon that he was uh unavailable and could not provide a statement. For us to read to um our audience. Now, the League of Women Voters um is focused and cares deeply uh about fairness. And our empty seat policy prevents us from holding a forum with only one candidate and no statement from that candidate's opponent. We regret this situation very much and it's with deep disappointment that we have to inform you that we cannot go forward. This evening with the Blaine City Council Forum. But I'd like to thank to, thank you to the audience and to the candidates for your time, attention and participation this evening. Good night.